Welcome everybody to the Norton Planning Board's meeting on Tuesday, April fifteenth. This is again a hybrid public meeting, so members of the public are welcome in person or remotely. In person, we are at the new Norton Town Hall at seventy-two East Main Street. To join online via the Zoom link, it's available on the meeting agenda, or the Zoom ID six-three-eight-nine-two-nine-one-zero-six-zero. There's also a phone number posted for those wishing to join that way. After the meeting, we'll also be available for replay at Norton Cable Access and Norton Media Center. As we get going here, this is, we are still getting used to all our AV setups here in Town Hall. So if any of the Zoom meeting would just like to confirm that we are coming through loud and clear, that would be great. Either with a thumbs up or a note in the chat there, that will help us out. And if we do not come through loud and clear, four people joining us remotely, please speak up and let us know, and we will do our best. So with that out of the way, I'll go into our our agenda here, in terms of planning board business and policies, just so everybody on the board is aware. The Select Board and Finance Committee did both meet recently to discuss the war articles we submitted for town meeting related to the NBA communities by law. Both of both, the votes of both boards were split, but ultimately neither board voted to recommend the article for town meeting. I have been, I have sent Paul a recommendation for each of those boards that we would like, if we go through this again, we would like to have input from them as part of the site selection process. In the form of potentially having a, what did I call it, consulting member join our meetings when we discuss it. Regardless of that, I have shared with both of those boards that I am planning on potentially bringing the articles to the floor at town meeting through the moderator, to make sure that town meeting has them to see it here, and if they choose to vote against it, that is their choice. But as we are working with the state, I want to make sure the state sees we gave town meeting a chance to vote on it. And we continue to move forward from that. Any questions, comments on that? Well done, because I think the ramifications of us not having something in front is going to be.
If I disagree, I think we should be moving to redo it as soon as possible, so that we don't have
We're not waiting and standing still for that either. But yes. Okay, in terms of bills and ones, we do have one bill here which I'll pass around. Again, this is funded from a grant for the zoning recredification project. There are two copies of the same bill. If you'd like to take a look, please feel free. And we do not have any minutes to approve of this meeting, so continue onward. Posted on the agenda was an A and R endorsement for Zero Crane Street. Paul received word this afternoon that it is looking to continue to our next session, correct?
Yes.
So.
Excuse me, Tim?
Further discussion?
So, Robenstein, with AP Law. Could you just introduce the board members that are present?
Thank you, Steve and Jim. Is there any further discussion? Okay. As all of the members are here in person, we can go back to doing the voice bro. So I'll say on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Extensions? Okay. Six oh oh.
Excuse me?
Continue to our next session.
Robenstein of KP Law, will you hear me?
In the public hearing section of our agenda, first item up is a remand of special permit SP dash one and seven, site plan two zero eight eight one, this is two thirty-seven, it's Main Street, application for a special permit and site plan approval for a twenty-seven thousand eighty square foot warehouse. This was remanded to the planning board by Land Court twenty-four, MISC zero 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 seven six. The owner is out of Conde and Capital Partners. This was originally on our agenda for September the twenty-fourth, and we're continuing to hear. Thank you very much, Mr. O'Neill, for being here. Just by way of introduction, we do have some new members who've joined the board since you were last here. And we do have Tom Council on the Zoom call as well, just to provide additional context. But if you'd like to fill ahead and just give us an overview of the project and what you're going to do with this application, we'll go forward.
Good, thank you, appreciate it. So we're in discussion of the lot along the Blue Star Business Park. So this is the lot that's located right at the corner of the intersection where the traffic signals. Originally, when we did the master plan, that section of the real estate zone was planned for retail use up to actually three buildings, which was then reduced to two buildings. And now, in five months, we're proposing industrial use status based on the retail we have with that. So we're here as a joint motion applied by the court for a remand vote of what was previously done. So in that, we had a site plan approval which was approved based on four to two vote by the board. The special permit was denied, even though we had four votes in favor, two against, because we did not have sufficient majority at that point. The reason for the denial, and just recently, it's not socially or economically desirable when the board voted, and does not feel, feel, and exist. So again, as the original development started, we had about eight hundred and eighty-seven, eight three hundred fifty square feet total for both phase one and phase two, Blue Star Business Park. That has been modified down to seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand square feet, which consists of seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand of industrial and small housing. Including the biggest proponents, the biggest part of that is our traffic analysis. So when we first submitted our traffic report to the post about a year ago, and we had the SC group to study, and we were approved by me for six thousand nine hundred and ninety-four trips per day. That has been reduced with the reduction and the changes of use to about twenty-one hundred trips per day. Drastic reduction in this private. The industrial approach that we've had, we've received all the conservation approvals, we've gone through third-party review and due. Brandon will describe the site plan and the actual building that proposed, get into the details of that. But these are setbacks, site coverage, parking, and all of our buildings are actually by up and park. So everything is fine, right, that stays in the building. The benefits that we provide by going to industrial is that, one, we're going to increase taxes, which we've already done. New permanent construction job growth as well, and permanent jobs. We obviously pay for building permits and sewer fees, pretty extensive, less traffic, and the ability to track new companies down. Today, we've generated a little more than over a million in the annual real estate taxes up at the park. One point three million in building permits to the town of Norton. Four hundred thousand dollars in utility connection fees, and nine point nine million of any structure drawn into the whole factory, which benefits the town of Norton. So that's where we stand today. We've also updated the fire department communication system down near the major station. That's here, all the way up to the buildings, and we created probably in excess of, we think, five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred jobs at the park to date. Currently, while we're going to industrial, we're trying to track, there's about eighty-four tenants, fifty thousand square feet or under in the South Blue Star Mass market. And we're trying to get a location from anywhere from middle borough all the way up to Frank. That's what we're targeting, and basically with the lease-up that we had on the first blocks of buildings for phase one and phase two, that's where we see the market momentum right now. To date, I mean, included in that, the economic impact would be roughly seventy thousand of real estate taxes based on this one building. And eighty thousand in Bill Holloman's ten, thirty-five thousand in sewer connections. So those are just some of the fee structures that would be added to Blue Star Project and our master numbers. We do have a list of industrial tenants that are looking at the market. And why we changed in addition to that is it's not as we have not been doing retail marketing. We started the project in two thousand and eighteen. We've extended a huge amount of marketing effort with CBRE, which is a leasing team. They've issued a notice letter that says the site lacks density of traffic. Although they like the location, close to four ninety-five, we haven't been able to land a retail tenant since two thousand and eighteen startup. So we wouldn't be making the switch unless we thought there's a viable need, and a reason why, based on the years in the work that we've done in the park. So lastly, I'd like to say that there's already quite a bit of retail vacancy that's down here. So we'd like to take a look at the as of right industrial use, because that's cited zone industrial. And in site plan and special permit as well. And as far as the denials, when we say that socially and economical opportunities, one, the project brings new taxes, new jobs, permit fees, connection fees, and zoning is industrial by right. And then also, the types of companies that we're bringing do a lot for the community. Whether it's Elion, we brought in the North Conference Center, Horizon Beverage, you have Wayfair, Pitty Bow's, Yale Appliance, and it's just understanding that food pantry in Norton that the appliances should just go in, but yeah. So that's what we're bringing. We're bringing great companies that want to get back to the town and the community that are here. And as far as does not still fulfill an existing need, we're tracking maybe tenants in the park. And financially, the impact that we bring, I think, is important to try to finish getting tight in all the towns around. So we want to generate taxes, and generate permit fees, and bring great companies. So I'll let Brandon describe a little bit more on site plan, so you have the layout and the building that's proposed.
Good evening, bringing car with freedom to hear. I just wanted to correct one thing, just one thing Jeff said. I believe he said it went down to twenty-one hundred trips, they reduced by twenty-one hundred trips. So ESC had submitted a letter last year with their original application, that the overall MIBA permanent building condition from two thousand and seventeen totaled sixty-nine hundred and forty-four trips per day. With this new change and the other changes that have been made with the AL and the other changes in the park, it's decreased by twenty-two hundred, so it's gone down to forty-six hundred and fifty-four. So it's about a big thirty percent increase. So a lot of you, probably have already seen this, most of this presentation, I want to go through it for the new members, but you have this on your screen, you can see the section of the site Jeff alluded to that way here. This was formerly actually two lots that have been combined into the area of, I think, it's right here, just next to Pitty Bow's. The corner of Leonard Street up top, and it's a, on the left, you can see the rear, it's on the fourth and side there, in the bottom left. Can't put over the project history, but this is the site plan that he alluded to, so there were actually three commercial buildings up front here, the bottom right one was changed to, well, the book parking for a large building that's been moved in before. The two buildings that you see, the fourteen thousand square foot and the eleven thousand square foot commercial, those are the ones we're looking at combining into the industrial building that we're here looking at. So just to rehash the project history, we filed in two thousand and twenty-three to combine lots one and two, which changed to a flex-use industrial building. Flex industrial is allowed by our right, as Jeff said. Overall, it's three buildings combined into one in that area, one here, like I said, it's already been changed to a parking lot, but in that whole area of buildings. Those three buildings are getting consolidated, there's one building, it's about a ten thousand, actually this is old since we, we did it more, but it's about a fifteen thousand square foot production building footprint, so the use is different. And the buildings have gotten smaller, there's less parking, there's less impervious coverage. And as we just spoke, it's less traffic with this use opposed to that square foot or retail commercial. We have the notice of ten that approved by the Commission before them a couple of months ago as well with this amendment. They blessed it as a minor modification, so once planning, hopefully, issues an approval, then that would get recorded as a, not as a minor modification, but how the commission did sign off on this change. Jeff said we were here last year, and the site plan was approved, special permits were denied. Since we've done the appeal process. So this is the revised proposal, so this is a little different than what you saw last year. It's the same in general kind of parking in the front, up towards Leonard Street, and the building, and then the loading in the back, same type of building, same use of building, same layout of building, the parking's the same, the loading's the same. What we did is we shortened it from left to right, so brought in an additional ten feet off of East Main Street. And we brought it approximately fifteen feet off Leonard Street, so it reduced by about fifty-three hundred square feet. I think it was thirty-two thousand square feet, we're at thirty-two thousand four hundred square feet, and we're at twenty-seven thousand one hundred square feet or so now. We left, like I said, the parking in the front, the circulation, we're accessing that access drive between us and the Pitty Bow's building and that existing curb cut on to Leonard. That all stayed the same from what you saw last year, the stormwater stayed the same, utilities stayed the same. Other than some minor tweaks on the service location with the water department. But in general, other than the actual footprint of the building, it's the same, that's the same that we saw last year. We did okay, the stormwater utilities that were there, but site-wise, we are closing, there's like existing, if you go down to East Main Street, kind of headed north off the highway, there's a right into the site now, that would be a move. That's part of this, we'll be coordinating, which could be a bad move. And we're connecting the sidewalks into the big sidewalk system along Leonard that goes up East Main with the new signals on East Main Street. So the three special permits that are part of this application is a request for a special permit for a building over ten thousand square feet. Kind of in hand in hand with that, a building of that size, they say it's more than twenty-five parking spaces, so that's really those special permits were granted for the, for the two thousand seventeen, would have been required for the two thousand seventeen, because that was eleven thousand, fourteen thousand, but that one was thirteen thousand. So those have already been issued, it's just consolidating the buildings and this type of industrial use you need to build a building that's ten square feet, if they buy a boat, Jeff, which is market research. And then the third special permit is because of our location within a water resource protection district. That was a focus of our conservation commission knowing this area, so to provide a stormwater stormwater plan, stormwater design, that was reviewed by DEP, the Conservation Agent Commission, and they had a third-party period view as part of that process. And all those bodies signed off on that. So just a little more detail on the parking. It's an access between, on that drive aisle between us and lot four, which is the Pitty Bow's building. Per zoning, a building of the size requires seventy-four spaces, we have forty-five. That includes the ADA spaces, and we both proposed three AV spaces in the middle. And then in the rear, we have seven, I'll use that A function, kind of squish the building down. We lost a loading space, so we have seven loading spaces in the back, two of those would probably be occupied by trash and hard work from back there if you see some of the other buildings. The loading area, we listed it in the back, just as, to work with the greater plans, and also it provides a kind of natural screen from the living room, so between the building and the proposed landscaping, and the existing landscaping, one, you shouldn't really be able to see that loading area too much as we go by on this street. We reviewed the access and circulation, it's been reviewed by the fire department, it's signed off by the fire department. But like I said, we're providing that sidewalk linkage from the front of our building, to the network that services the rest of the park that goes down the street. Stormwater, we have three stormwater practices on the site. Kind of working north to south, we have an infiltration base in sand filter. That treats the front parking area, the big rectangle you see in the parking area, that's an underground infiltration system, that's the roof system. And then in the back, in the loading area, we have again sand filter infiltration base. All are sized per the Norton Indian regulations, they require this for water quality, infiltration, stormwater retention. Everything's located out of Compton's jurisdiction, the only reason we went for them is they're actually a survey area that's within their jurisdiction that we're re-vegetated. But all the proposed improvements, all the permanent landscaping, all the pavement, everything in the future be located outside of their jurisdiction. Under this plan, there is a small decrease in impervious area, we prepared this to the retail design that was up here. Again, this was approved by conservation and a third-party period view last year. Utilities are fairly simple. There's existing sewer and water stuffs to this property that are on the right side under that access drive to Pitty Bow, so we're planning on tying into those. We've talked to the Sewer and Water Commission, and we have some hydrogen testing and everything to verify before we do have the wind turbine. But the water pressure capacity and sewer capacity is adequate for this. Landscapes, this is fairly similar to what you saw last year. A mixture of kind of ornamental lower plantings around the front parking area, the corner of Leonard Street, some kind of decorative plantings around the sign there, street trees along Leonard Street, and then also some kind of street, more screening-type trees along East Main. Those are both required by your landscape ordinance. So that, that buffer is what I was, I was moving through before, there's some existing vegetation along the west side of this lot. There's also the proposed trees and some other screening that we're adding over there, to kind of screen the side of the building, south of that side of the building, facing East Main, and also screen that loading area. And the shade requirements, tree requirements, and everything, you need your local bylaw. And then to end, I have just a couple images of architectural rendering, so this is actually showing the proposed landscaping and the building. So this would be kind of off of East Main, you can see the left side is the Pitty Bow's building, but this is kind of similar to what we'd see from East Main Street. And then this is, you know, continuing on East Main, it's kind of taking that turn into Leonard, you can see that the Blue Star sign on the front there, and then looking out of the building, the building setback off of Leonard, the parking in the front, and those, so those street trees, et cetera, out in front of the building. So you can see the two images. So that's kind of a summary of the site design, if there are any questions, pick up the ride.
Thank you. Before we get to that, I was just going to see, because this is something that has gone through appeal, we do have Tom Council, we're gonna do it here. You want to unmute and A, make sure we can hear you, and B, just provide any initial context that you would like to give based on the project that it is now.
Can everyone hear me?
And we are not hearing you right now if you're speaking, so we're just gonna do a quick AV troubleshooting here, so just give me one minute here.
Robin, can you?
You can speak again?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, excellent. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Tim, before I get started, and I don't have a lot of comments, just for the folks that are participating remotely, can you introduce the board members? And then it would just be helpful when individual board members speak, if they just identify themselves in case everyone can't see everyone.
Sure. So I'll just, I'll let everybody introduce themselves going down the line here. I'll be Tim Griffin, I'm the chair. Steve Worsham, Doug Welsh, Eric Norris, Jim Arts, Alan Boy. Thank you, everybody.
So that, let's see, it's one, two, three, four, five, six or seven tonight?
We have six this evening, we have one member who is absent.
Okay, and the applicant's aware of it?
Something that I was going to bring up when we went back and forth with them, and they've already stated that they will put in the submit a loan form to continue to participate.
Okay, excellent. Just wanted to make, so who's missing?
Laura Parker.
Okay. I know there have been some changes on the boards, so I just wanted to make sure we had our notes right. I, I don't have a lot to comment on this, the one that I wanted to confirm with the applicant with the board, so I have that the original approvals needed for the board were site plan, a special permit because the development's over ten thousand square feet of floor area, and because there's more than twenty-five parking spaces, and a special permit because of the amount of impervious space. That's the relief I have, I just wanted to confirm everyone's still on the same page, and that the change in the project hasn't forgotten any additional release, or taken any of those away, but I believe those are all still needed, those, those three. I'm, I'm here if you have questions for me, but I, I think it's more on the board's purview at this point.
Thank you. Since you were here, and since this is something that's gone through appeal, I want to make sure that we don't not take advantage of you being with us this evening, so thank you.
No, absolutely, I, I appreciate it, I wanted a chance to confirm that.
So to the members here, we have specific questions for the applicant about the projects I proposed to hear this evening.
I like the changes, you guys have done a good job picking whatever concerns people.
Questions, obviously, has gone through Compton, so we don't have that game of chicken that we sometimes have with any town boards. Has gone through the peer review, any additional layout questions or anything like that that we wanted to raise, otherwise I would go to the public comments section. Our discussion here. If anybody in the Zoom meeting would like to speak, I'd ask that you please raise your virtual hand here in the meeting. And I will try and call on everybody in order, as well as anybody in person who'd like to speak. I don't see anybody running up to the podium here in person. Mr. Segal, I expected to see your hand raised, so if you'd like to go ahead and start us off, please do.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I, I first, I'd like to apologize, I, I have sent a supplemental, you have the letter I sent in on the twenty-fourth. I've sent in a supplemental letter, I sent it in as of October tenth. It had a good deal of basically pictures attached to it, and due to its size, it never popped back to me, but apparently neither Tim nor Paul has received it. I sent it out again today, because Paul mentioned he hadn't received it. And again, they appeared to not have received it. I apologize. It's always been my practice to provide the board and the participants with information that I was presenting and questions I raised in advance of the meeting to give them an opportunity to address them, and I apologize for not doing so. In absence and not having received it, with your patience, I'd like to read the letter that I sent out to the board. It basically does supplement what has previously been provided, and while I'm doing it, I'll add my comments. This is to supplement my previous letter dated September twenty-third regarding the above. As you're aware, the court's remand order provides, the board shall remand the hearing de novo and base its decision on all documents and information that the plaintiffs or other previously submitted, and any additional documents or information that the plaintiffs or others may present at the amended hearing. It's my understanding and counsel can confirm it, that that does not include any previous findings or any previously decisions. So basically, it's before you are new, to look at basically what's been presented before and was presented now to make a decision. The schedule at one seventy-five C two of the zoning bylaws provides zoning district dimensions from industrial zones, including minimum setbacks and maximum building heights, and feed ending stories. It must be noted that these are minimums and maximums, and do not control what the board may require in exercising its function in evaluating special permits and site plan review. According to fifteen point one purpose, the purpose of Article fifteen, site plan approval, is to ensure the impact of the proposed development, whether allowed or as a matter of right or by special permit, and according to purposes of the zoning bylaw, that the proposed development adequately provides in its design and layout for the transportation needs of occupants. And the proposed development is in harmony with the existing neighborhood character and protects against adverse impacts to joint landowners. In evaluating and rendering a decision on the proposed development plan, which requires site plan approval and or special permit, it's both, the planning board shall, shall consider the degree to which the proposed development achieves the following objectives, and may require additional modification to the proposed site plan to ensure the objectives are fulfilled. A, transportation needs of the occupant. As part of the final environmental impact report, under coordination with the Public Transit Agency, the proposal was, will Was will coordinate with a G A T R A to provide a shuttle service from the site to the center of the town. To two existing G A T R A bus routes, providing services to Taunton, Attleboro and Mansfield. One bus route runs to and from Mansfield and provides connection with Boston and and Providence. That was at the final E I R page eighty-eight. The proposed mitigation that was provided with their mitigation included reference to a bus stop at the project. Following the results of a J flexibility study, which bus stop was reflected as previously submitted. On plans that appeared to be in the common driveway, I'm not sure what 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 was what. Would still been required, I know the plans I've seen, it always showed a bus stop there, it's not there now, I don't know if other plans. Have been made or or required, I'm just calling that out because I'm aware of it. The other question I raised is, the access driveway appears to be outside the project parcel's lot line. Query, as a private driveway providing vehicle ac- access to at least two building lots. Has a special permit been issued for a common driveway as defined and required under one seventy-five two point two. Terms defined, I I'm not aware of that, I just noted that basically it appears to be using it as a common driveway. I don't know what arrangements were previously done, they may have been submitted, but I raised that question to the board. Setbacks and building heights, design objective, this is under the objectives of the fifteen. Design, the proposed development should be designed to enhance the natural and aesthetic qualities of the town. Conserve the value of the land and buildings and protect and preserve the historic and cultural heritage of the town. To accomplish these goals, the following design guidelines shall be observed. Design along a main thoroughfare, note this project is on East Main Street. Development on the town's main thoroughfare should be should maintain the following standards, which were possible and appropriate. Buildings, the height and scale of buildings should be compatible with the architectural type and character of the surrounding buildings. Architectural details including signs, material colors and textures should enhance and preserve the character of the building area. Roofline, the the design intention roof should wear. Practable be compatible with the characteristics of the wingman style architect. I attached to to this letter. A schedule which basically is a schedule reflecting the distance of the commercial and industrial buildings along. The common thoroughfare, thoroughfare, that's East Main Street, the principal buildings to the street line based upon. Estimates from Google Earth, in addition, I attached exhibited the. Pictures depicting the setbacks, height, architectural styles, roof design and and picture of the buildings. Basically, if you guys drive down there, I mean, I'm happy to submit it and I'd like to, if this remains open. The opportunity to submit those if they have not already been received, I think maybe the problem with downloading the size of the the properties. It appears that any of the buildings, let me just go through the, that schedule provides from what I could tell. One forty-six East Main Street, that's the Dunkin' Donuts Shopping Center, is basically ninety-three feet from the street line. Uh, the convenience store is forty-nine feet from the street line, two seventy-four East Main Street, that's the forty B project. That's fifty-nine feet from the from the sideline, uh, two seventy-eight to two ninety-four, that's the Red Bull Crossing. That's seventy feet from the from the from the street line. Burning and Phillips is eighty-three feet, that's an industrial building, C F S is approximately a hundred and fifty-eight feet. The the gym and that that complex is a hundred and fifty-six feet from the from the street line. And the storage facility is eighty-four feet from the street line. In each of those cases, maybe with exception of one, the parking is in front of those buildings and the entrances face East Main Street. In approving the forty B project at two seventy-four East Main Street. The zoning board of appeals required reducing the street facing buildings from three stories that they were requiring. To a two-story project, the pictures that were submitted reflected the. The interior buildings being three stories, three stories high and the the buildings facing East Main Street being two stories high. I'm sure this board is aware, the standards of those are a forty B project, a lot more lenient to a developer. In that basically they can receive waivers for practically any thing they're looking for. In this case, the board did not allow that and they pushed them back because of the issue of being overbearing on the street. And and as part of the town council's twelve-six thirteen draft decision of the forty B case, including the following. At the board's request, an applicant conducted a balloon test. Uh, this is covered wagon stuff, I mean, for AI, uh, to provide the physical value. Aid to assist the board and the public in understanding the proposed height and massing and scale of the project. The applicant also provided multiple other visual aids to assist the board. To in the public in visualizing the height and massing of the project, including cross-sections. Uh, and a a computer simulator renderings and videos of the proposed site along East Main Street. To provide renditions as to the impact of the proposed massing and scale of the building in relation to East Main Street. Uh, this should likely be requested by such a simulation to to reflect the proposed building. What it will look like and its proximity to the streetscape, basically as I'm looking at it, even with sitting back forty feet. There's portions of this project that maybe are fifty feet back from the from the property line. They're showing basically a brick, a brick veneer building, which basically looks more, can look more like a prison. That's, they have no idea what they're gonna be looking for right now, they're looking for, it's a spec house. And what the what the tenant's gonna look for, God knows. They asking the asking for facing the 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 streetscape facing the main street and the town servicing. No, this is servicing, this area is services between East Main Street, between four ninety-five and Newland Street. There are over four hundred residential units, beyond that, you have. Gluten Glen and a series, as I've mentioned, of industrial and commercial properties. I would venture to say that that the area on this side of four nine. Uh, on four ninety-five has the most dense population. Along East Main Street than any other area of the town, and also probably brings in more revenue than any other area per square. For the same area in town, so basically, we're getting over four ninety-five. And we're we're looking at really a very important part of this town and a very important part for population and for value. And what what is gonna be there, they're gonna be putting up against four ninety-five, up against East Main Street. Uh, forty by two hundred. Edifice, uh, but basically, you don't know what it's gonna look like, they can give you renditions now, but they're building this spec building. Um, the question I had is, they're complaining that they couldn't sell the retail, over COVID, not much stuff was being sold. And basically, they're not even saying they have a new tenant now. The only other building that I'm aware of that was built on spec for this project was the first, maybe the second building. And and if you remember, or maybe you don't because we're all new, that was basically amended. They they, so you went through the process, you gave a site plan review based on specs, and they came back and they ended up tearing down one building. And adding a parking lot, and so the the fact now that they're saying, well, I can't, I can't do retail because I don't have a tenant. But I want to do industrial, but I don't have a tenant either, so we have no idea what that tenant's gonna want. We have a building, unlike anything else along this strip, it doesn't have parking facing it, doesn't have an entrance facing East Main Street. It's closer to Main Street than anything else that we have along this property line. And and basically, I understand, under the site plan approval, that's your requirement. You're trying to look at these things to understand what it's gonna do to the town, yes, there's value to the town, you're gonna get taxes. Everybody's gonna talk about taxes, but that property is gonna be developed, that's that's the developer's problem into how and when it's gonna be developed. Consistent with what's applicable to the town, and the town manager proposes project there. One of the main things he said to everybody was saying, don't worry, it's gonna be subject to site plan approval and special permits. And we're gonna make sure that it's done right, that's your, that's your project, that's your responsibility, raising revenue for the town is not. Your responsibility is the forty, the four hundred residents along East Main Street. And the value that 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 we're providing in this 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 area of town is providing to the town. Just in in terms, just in terms of parking, I just want to make one of the comments. I understand. I I'm I'm looking at a a B S C group memorandum of September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, to Neil, to Jeffrey O'Neil from Sam, Offie, Otto and those Stanford. And then they they gave the summary of basically the total square footage proposed originally was the eight eight seven three one six, three one five. And as of twenty twenty-one, it was seven eighty-nine, three thirty-five. In both cases, it was basically, they had the same parking, one was seven oh nine and one was seven twenty-one. I'm not sure where the parking lies now, but understand, we now have the introduction of last mile operations. And those, from what I understand, are not reflected, these numbers reflect parking spaces. They don't reflect actual traffic going in and out of the property, uh, nor nor did they reflect. The extent of tra- truck traffic going in and out of the property, I don't know what it is right now, I couldn't tell you that, I'm just saying. For a reduction of a hundred thousand square feet and with it probably the value to the town of a hundred thousand square feet of building. Uh, we're getting a lot more parking and a lot more cars, my understanding, those last mile cars aren't even housed in mass in 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 Norton. Uh, so we're not even getting revenue that, again, I may be wrong, that might have been changed when I was listening to him initially. That's what I understood to be the case, my suggestion, my request would be. That the board, you know, gets some rendering, I was, I'd like to see what the building physically would look like, as close it is to four ninety-five. And again, unless you're showing this as as a main entrance or 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 parking in front of it. Uh, you're gonna be seeing some rendition of a blank building, and whatever they give you. Chances are, you know, they may wanna, they can make the whole thing glass, but my guess is some tenant coming in there is not gonna want it glass. So it's gonna be changed, so for that, for you to go through this exercise and give them a special permit and and a site plan review. Without seeing literally what they ended and they are gonna end up proposing, seems to me, putting the cart before the horse. I I just encourage you to 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 look at the site plan, the obligations of the site plan review and take a look if you need to. I I'm happy, and if you, if it just stays open, I request to be able to submit the photographs I gave. Their photographs all along four four ninety, uh, East Main Street, showing. The distance of all these different buildings and the heights of these different buildings, to get a sense of really what what's consistent with what's there. And I think that's your duty and that's your obligation under the site plan and 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 special permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Segal. So one of the points, I will say, I do know that we did. Going back, I forget when, don't quote me on the year, but that was permitted as a common driveway special permit. So I know that that was done specifically because we were going through the permit process for everything else. And then decided we needed a new permit in the middle of all the other terms of the relationship, so. It's, it is probably worth, uh, following the applicant. Uh, just to confirm that we don't have references in that common driveway to lots or buildings that. Aren't being proposed that we want. And if we need to just check if that's a potential modification or the language that with the original. Common driveway permit. Should be reviewed. In terms of. Specific questions for. Mr. Carr, in terms of, uh, but I did mention kind of the less and transit opportunities, that's something that you have explored with. With GATRA and the kind of discussion they've had, I know we've had different changes to different things over the years.
I mean, we started initially in the conversation. The very stages department, so we had those conversations, but there was never a sensitive urgency by them to say, hey. We want a bus stop, so we have the area, we move for a bus stop, still there, can always keep it there, if they want to make that happen.
And and this, if there was a stop, it would be in this common driveway area or at the end of the common driveway. There would still be circulation for whatever we needed. Any questions from the board at this point? Unless I'll continue with public comment. Mr. Ravens, if you want to.
Yes, there's a, there's a gap or go button that you can. And you can ask for something and it and it could more which of them could be. The booth office spot where people can use that gap or go button. To the booth office spot for many businesses they can, and I use that gap or go button as a good reliable service.
Thank you, Peter. Additional comments from anybody on the Zoom meeting or in person, not seeing a whole lot of hands in front of me. So I'm gonna ramble for fifteen to twenty seconds in case anybody on the Zoom meeting would like to speak further. But out of that, I'll go again to members of the board, see if they can make, and then to. Paul, is there anything from a procedural standpoint that you feel that we're waiting for as regards to this application?
No, I think we had everything, some of these items, we need to do a little bit of research, such as on the on the driveway.
Okay, and Mr. O'Neil, Mr. Carr, do you, as we do have one member not here this evening. Are you looking for the board to close the public hearing this evening or are you looking to? That would be your preference, if the board felt comfortable. Do we have any additional comments, questions, concerns? As the applicant said, they're ready to close if we are, that is if we are, so if we would like to continue, that is obviously our purview. Uh, to review anything, or if we have, whether we do so, I'd say. Should have a reason to do so, if we have something that the applicant to research, we come back to us with in terms of. Anything else. Which one's the common driveway situation?
I think that. I can remember early on in this discussion, there was talk of the way that they had set it up, it was Pinty Bowls, that's. The driveway that's being used, and then I think in your original rendering. You switched it so that the common driveway came around because you eliminated that third building. If I remember correctly.
I I would view it as buttoning up the language around the common driveway special permit if we needed to go at it. Um, the only thing I'm saying is if the common driveway referenced, this common driveway serving buildings one, two and three and four. In the language. But I know we had a common driveway special permit. So that's really the only, it wouldn't affect this site plan. It would just affect the special permit that they'd be using to get access. So. To go on, we just had a long speech by Warren, Mr. Scott. As far as the aesthetics of the building, how, to what degree are we supposed to enforce that? If we, I mean, he was using the word shell, and that generally means we don't have a choice. Is that something that we would technically be forced to review right now? And the, the applicants providing this renderings, they would build out the building paths. We know it's along, right on East Main. Right on the road. And the surrounding area is. Next. I understand why I wouldn't have an entrance out to the main road because coming down from the highway, that's pretty quick. Yeah, and in in theory, there could be in like a parking area and a walkway in the front or something like that. Um, and you have the window, the renderings do have the the windows and kind of that pop out.
Yes, I'm comfortable with the renderings, okay, but I also don't want to see a big switch. Yes, I'm comfortable with the renderings okay, but I also don't want to see a bait switch that also it becomes a money issue and the person that's now getting the piece wants to, you know, drive the cost down and make the renderings stick. I don't want to see that. The renderings we did, we talked about, I know that some of the board members talked about. Now that it'd be a nice, or I think what you rendered to me was far from it, looked like a, it fits right in with what they're going. But I don't want to see a bait switch. And then all of a sudden, something gets dumbed down because the intent doesn't want to pay.
Yeah, I mean, it typically our work is when we assign the building from the building actually with you know, part of that review is to make sure it's consistent with what was approved by the board. So it's kind of left up to staff, what is a minor modification or is the major modification and what we have to go back to the board. But you know, we will do some work and follow if we have to come back. In drastic, but you have to come back.
Yeah, I don't want to see drastic.
Yeah, I'd feel comfortable. Not our intention, but your protection would be if it did, you know, something issued, saying that, I'd be comfortable with it.
I'd be pretty comfortable with the idea. I do think it's a nice building overall. It looks good. Again, I'm just with the knowledge of this sort of enforcement of an aesthetic. Is there a standard that we're allowed to hold you to in something we're not allowed to hold you to? Like if the, if the design that is there right now, if we are not technically allowed to hold you guys to that, that is sort of where my concern is. So I think that, yeah, I was going to say, Rob, I was going to say the applicant's probably the right person to ask that question in all fairness to them, so.
Yeah, I think the applicant is committing to build what they told you they're going to build. And in that case, I think it's fair if there's a, you know, if you elect to approve this, that both the special permit and the site plan be conditioned on the construction being in substantial conformance with the plans and the renderings that you received. And that way, if they're not going to do that, then they're going to have to come back. And that would just be a condition in the decision. So it's clear to everybody.
Thank you, Robyn.
Of course.
So additional questions from the board to the applicant or to and staff related to the process?
The original decision, do we have any more, the public conditions or the mixed state of conditions? What we haven't talked about? In my condition, a lot of suspicion.
In the initial, in the decisions that we issued, since it was a denial for the special permit, we didn't have conditions. There may have been conditions related to the site plan. If we wanted, as you say. But yeah, if we wanted to, if we couldn't close the public hearing, issue a decision and collate those at a later date. If we wanted to do that.
Before you jump to that, so if I may just, one minute I would say is if, you know, one group that you can go is to, you know, continue this so that you can review a draft decision at your next meeting. Whether or not you want to close the public hearing before you complete your deliberations is up to you. The only limitation is that if you close the public hearing and then you're deliberating over the decision and conditions, you really can't go back and forth with the applicant on any questions.
Yes.
It's your call, but it can be limiting if you choose to close the public hearing before you've worked out, you know, conditions.
Yes, understood. Thank you. Yes, I would just say if we, if the decision is to close the public hearing, we can make a decision with or without having the conditions finalized. If there are specific conditions other than the one related to the architecture that we talked about that are a a deal breaker for anybody's vote, then I would recommend that we have a draft decision before we vote on anything hard.
I do think for this matter, you're going to want to consider having a draft decision to review and vote on, particularly where it's already on litigation.
Thank you, Rob.
And that way you can make sure all your findings are articulated, conditions are included. Are you planning on voting the special permit separate from the site plan? Last time you had these two separate decisions.
I think our general inertia has been to have as many individual votes as we need for better or for worse. So do you want to take each special permit as a motion? We're not there yet. I think we would take them individually. So to have town council suggesting that we have a draft decision, we're going to vote. The question then becomes, do we want to close the public hearing and close off comments from public and the applicant? Or do we want to continue?
I think she just said not to. If we're going to do.
We can do whatever we want, but if we close the public hearing.
If we're going to have town council. We go by that. Let's not have her here, have her give her opinion and then I'll say in the world.
I'm sure that, I'm sure that people don't listen to council's advice all the time, every day, so.
No, but that's a fair point.
I'm not advocating a position. I'm just reminding the board that if you close the public hearing.
Yes.
Then you can't, you can't negotiate with the applicant through deliberations. How you want to handle it's up to you.
Did you got to tell the problem with the conditions that we said the first time? No, I'm pretty much standing up as if it were our sixth building in the park. Kind of remain a model of the, I think the one that Lawrence explained with is the deer resistant.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure that was in there.
Yeah, just making sure that that was one of the ones.
If it's not, then that's a planting, landscaping update.
They asked the deer resistant with?
Uh, deer like to eat our ingredients. Yes, as a colleague, as at least one landscape, but as has told the board, he asked, deer resistant only matters as much as the deer are hungry.
Does somebody like to drive them away?
No, no. That would not be keeping with the town's architecture standards, unfortunately.
We like our deer, so.
Okay. So I don't see that condition, but I.
I don't see that in your prior application. Obviously, we always recommend that you make the findings that you need to make under the bar of the law when you vote.
Thank you.
Do you would be kind of considerate about that, would you?
Why, we're being, we're being kind of provided with.
So you don't want to go there.
That's pretty consistent.
So I, I wasn't saying we move forward without closing the public. Guess whatever I need to.
So we had, we had a motion to close the public hearing, we have a motion to continue. I didn't take a vote on motions to close. Do you withdraw that motion?
I withdraw. One second, this.
Answer the motion from Steve and a second from them to continue. Is that to our next meeting on, you feel that within time meeting and everything else, kind of, you would feel that our next meeting, it makes sense for us to have a draft decision?
Yes.
So our next meeting would be the twenty ninth? Is that? It's your motion, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and is any friends special on the motion to continue to decline? Okay.
I have one other question that's a. If we're going to do a draft decision and have it ready for the next thing, what would the decision be that we're drafting?
The decision would generally be because the conditions would only be part of an approval. It would be a decision based on if we approve, these are the conditions that would be part of that.
Okay, but this is a decision to.
Yes, the findings are, the findings and the reasoning and all the conditions, yes. So we have a motion and a second to continue. I'll go through everybody for voting immediately.
Tim, can I just clarify, you're continuing, sorry, you're continuing to October twenty ninth, is that at seven fifteen as well?
Yes, thank you.
And will that also be a hybrid in person or a remote meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and the plan is to review a draft decision and potentially vote at that next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I'll go through the members for a vote here. Steve?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So we are continuing to our next session. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Robyn.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda here, zero Hill Street. Paul, I don't know if you want to just give a quick introduction on some of the efforts that have been going on, or if you'd like the applicant to speak to those.
I can just speak very briefly, I'll turn it over to Luke, but as you know, in your last meeting, the big issue remaining was Hill Street itself, but it's a narrow.
I say to Paul, once, once again, your family has hurt me and it won't happen again, just letting you know.
And there's been, we're in the. No, I just, no.
Yeah, that was sent like so very soon. Debbie, you're not on the right car. You don't want to say whatever you say. So in response to your concerns about, about traffic on Hill Street, we had a site meeting with the applicant and that included a representative from, from our public schools, police department, the highway department and myself. To look over potential strategies to try to address, you know, the current conditions there and work to see what could be done to help improve the traffic flow, slowing it down, recognizing that it's binding. So with that, I'll turn it to Luke.
Yeah, good evening to the record with the stuff and all with Fuller. I mean, Paul did a good job of summarizing where we were and where we are. Effectively, I think we can all agree that for the most part, traffic along Hill Street, the speed primarily seems to be the major outstanding issue. I don't want to put words in people's mouths, but that generally seems to be the major concern, so outstanding. So at the end of the last meeting, we put our heads together as a project, we involved, what might you, what might we be able to do to again, continue to help mitigate some of the perceived impacts of traffic and some of the perceived impacts of Hill Street? So we got together, as Paul mentioned, on site. We've since reconvened and our traffic folks have pulled together a signage plan. I'll call it an off-site signage plan because it's signage that's designed to be placed along Hill Street, not on the property itself. And I'm going to let Emily from Bowman talk specifically about what that signage is. But again, this is something that we thought would help address the outstanding concerns. And with that, I'll let Emily talk in more detail about the signs. I'm sharing that, that plan on Zoom. And here, your vote.
Hi, Emily from Bowman. So as was mentioned, and as is in front of you, so this is a plan showing the off-site signage improvements. Right now on Hill Street, there's very limited signage. There are no regulatory speed limits there or advisory speed limits only. There's no warning signage for the horizontal curves along the roadway. So on the plan in review, north to south is left to right. So we're showing signage that would be installed from South Washington Street to Clinton Street, including posted speed limits of thirty mile an hour, along with warning signs for all the trucks to alert drivers that there are horizontal curves along the roadway, both in efforts to lower operating speeds. We also have signage approaching the site, warning drivers that trucks will be entering from the site. And then at the site itself, for exiting trucks, showing that they would need to turn left to go right turn and those discuss to prevent trucks, trucks traveling north on Hill Street. So overall, looking at the traffic materials that were submitted and peer reviewed, you know, this is signage and improvements that would benefit Hill Street beyond what's the project is showing to create as an impact. But certainly happy to answer any questions on the signage proposed.
Signage or overall traffic question?
Either.
And we've talked about speed, we've talked about, as one of the other questions. Paul, just maybe to restate and some of the work that what the town's looking at. One of the big questions was just in terms of the width of the roadway. In terms of what the town was looking at for that and into size and scope and.
So one of the things that the group looked at, so the highway superintendent was there and he is looking at the actual right of way. Because it's possible that they could trim more. He hasn't confirmed that yet, and it was repaved a couple of years ago, so that wasn't on the table. But it's possible we could see additional vegetation trimmed to improve sight lines. But he hasn't been able to confirm that yet.
Okay, so there's the potential for trimming along the roadway to be wider, but not a loop, is that correct? Okay, just making sure I'm hearing you correctly. Okay. I wasn't sure if that was for you or for.
Can I ask a question about that? Why was the actual widening not feasible? Because that's just, right, but if, if we have a lot of commercial land there, is that something that we can talk about? That if they want to develop that, a big concern about the bit of the Hill Street is part of the problem. Couldn't we work something out with the landowners and looking to, is that not something that the town would be able to kind of bargain? It is, it is by right. I get it his own, but I think it's a true concern too about width of the road.
Potentially, but I have no idea how much that costs.
Right, but I'm saying that that's something, if we're looking to get this developed.
It's a budget issue and it's, it's very possible that.
Town budget.
Town budget.
No, I'm not asking for the town to do this. I'm saying if the landowners are looking to do this, it's like putting in a set that, you know, town sewer, hey, we want to get this developed or paid for the town sewer to, like, it seems like it could be a fix of like, let's widen the road.
And right now, you don't even know what the right way is.
Okay, so that's right, all right. That was my question when you rounded up about width, that was fair.
Yes, I think I'm grabbing up and down, I kind of do see what the residents are saying about this. That goes back for a long while. Yeah, not very clear. I didn't go hiking up in those woods or anything, so I don't know how bad, I know there's some that ones back there that dodge. And it could be a thing, but when you look at this on a map, how high was the look at the second driveway out the back onto the cars? Way, that looks so, I look at that on the map and I don't know what's under those trees, paths that I see, you know, but it really looks like that was a win-win win for you guys and easier for you guys.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's a wet one to shoot. That pullback of the property is what you'd be filling for than the typical amount of wet ones that you'd be allowed to fill. You'd be talking most likely about probably meter submissions and then potentially I refer of engineers, which would at that point make some project cost prohibitive, so there's hardly no, that would be peaceful.
It really is not just.
There's no guarantee we get the approvals to do that anyway with all the jurisdictional impacts that would be created.
I'm not a bad employee, but like I said, I didn't go hiking, so I didn't, you know, find out how bad it was.
It was something that was looked at, but determined to be.
So it was looked at really hard, it's just not the favorite. Fair enough, I had asked. It really does, on the map, it looks like so much of the.
Yeah, it's just, it's a lot of gray areas you do that in the jurisdictional power, so it's pretty straight.
We have the traffic engineer up here, comments, questions about the signs you have up on the screen here?
I mean, the signs themselves as a concept is great, that's cool. I mean, but it just seems like something our town highway department should be in many ways. Like it's, it's not nothing, I appreciate it, but it is only like a couple branded signs. Like, it's, um, it's not nothing, I appreciate it, but it is only like a couple branded signs, so I think we can have that made if we wanted to put signs on Hill Street. There, there's, the road's still pretty small, and it's, it's more of the amount of traffic that's gonna be generated, the, the number of vehicles, not just fitting some vehicles. So I think that was kind of the major concern, in the condition of many trucks.
Okay. Paul, you said highway was tending to get back on a couple of items. We have a timeline on that, or is it open ended?
It's not open ended, um, unfortunately, the, the Traffic Safety Committee, that before this plan was submitted, um, so they haven't had a chance to meet as a committee to, to review it and, and determine what they think. Highway Superintendent didn't have any issues with it, but through their process, it really, the committee needs to review it. I would just say, adding to the comment earlier, regardless of the decision here, this looks like a good plan for Hill Street.
What, is it more in terms of the right of way question?
Well, that and reviewing the plan itself.
So it's both?
Both, yes, so, location of signs is appropriate.
Okay. So additional questions for the applicant at this time? It looks like they're doing that, it's just so. Is, if nobody has any questions right now, I can go to members in public, like the comment, if we want to propose continuing till we have more of an answer from town staff or highway and traffic safety, any who can do that as well. Do you want to come back there? Yes. Um, so we're going to dip there, make injections to public comment at this point. Okay. Um, okay, what was it that you said? I'm happy to hear what you said, specifically.
Well, going to do a fifty-one Hill Street thing. So highway department, thank them, because they cut in, not in all the four feet, they did already cut in six feet, which has now allowed vehicles to have a place to go when you can't get by a SUV or the bus. I also spoke to Christine Hatfield from the school transportation department, who reached out to me on October first, when she took the drive downhill street with her transportation coordinator, and couldn't believe the size of the vehicles that are coming out of the town industrial park going north with a bus. She was planning to meet with the town manager, whether that happened or not. I also uncovered her to reach out to the planning board. Speed is a concern, absolutely, but it's a concern on every street in New Orleans, so Washington, Pine Street, Frank Street, because I travel them. Our concern is the safety, residents. People, the bike trail is booming right now, there are so many people going downhill street to get to that bike trail. It's a concern, and widening it the way they did, cutting down the vegetation, opens the road up a little bit, so it's eye-opening, it's like, it comes a track, trail track, let me get over into the vegetation that's been mowed down, they've already cleared it. I'm sorry, they, they've already cleared it.
Right.
Sorry, but it didn't, it's definitely widened the road, it's not gonna make it any safer, we just have a place to go. And they're out there cutting down trees, and they've cut, we're cutting trees down at the end by the wastewater treatment plant, and that's out of power, I haven't had power since six o'clock this morning, I mean, six o'clock tonight. They were out cutting trees. Um, so I, I get what they're doing, and I know you've talked about pushing traffic, so when you get down in front of that wastewater treatment plant, and you're trying to get around, and you're coming up north, car to car, it doesn't, it's not enough room, it really isn't, and I'm sorry that that's how the size of the road is, but, and again, that was considered to be in commercial, industrial, and also retail, I guess, right back in nineteen fifty-nine. The town industrial park wasn't there. The traffic, that one was dirt, I grew up on that street. When they zoned it for that, they haven't, have you revisited it, because of the town industrial park pushing the traffic? People commuting to work, are flying down the streets because they're running late, people are flying out to get home. Speed is definitely a concern, but it's the concern of the width of the vehicles fitting. And I don't know if you were able to speak to the school transportation department or not, because she did call me right away, she says, I'm on your street, she says, I can't believe it, I'm following one of my buses. So it's not, again, it's not the residents of Hill, it's all those kids that are on that bus, from all the surrounding towns, and all those homes that are being built on high, are going to add more kids on the bus. So that's all I have to say, I hope everyone takes that consideration. Robbie, appreciate you taking a ride downhill street for the first time, checking it out, so I can hear the shit out of them. Yes, it does, if they try coming out of my driveway.
Yep.
So, but they can't edit this video up, so, I would go live on, but yeah, it, it is a scare. At any time of the day, even on weekends.
The thing is, what they're gonna do, it, see, it should be, I, 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 I got the, I'm the public, I thought I kept up with it, I, I, gee, the town, I think it's make this one a safe, but it is.
Right, and it was just came probably nine or six months ago. And then they put the white lines in, and if you're going north on a Hill Street, that side is wider than the side going south. They didn't balance it, and it still isn't, no one stays within their mark. And with adding traffic, um, in industrial, commercial, retail perspective, it's not, it's not safe.
I, I feel like if they're doing buildings, things up high too, it's gonna increase its way up there, I, I couldn't, like I said, nothing to do with you guys.
No, and.
You want to think about.
Right, and Pine Street is now going to connect through Creek Street on South Washington. So it's just a lot of residential traffic that's gonna increase. So, so like that, thank you.
Thank you. I do see one, uh, hand raised in the Zoom meeting. Um, Nada, that's you, you can just take your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Aqua Nada, I go by Nada Woods, I live at fifty-five Hill Street. My driveway is gonna be right across from their exit driveway. I, um, have been doing foster care for the state of Massachusetts for thirty-seven years. I have little ones that get on that bus at seven o'clock in the morning. Believe me, the bus is not, it's not safe for the kids getting off the bus in the afternoon. Getting on in the morning, they're facing my driveway, the, the opening is facing my driveway, but when they come home, it's the opposite side. There's a curve right there in the road where they're gonna be exiting those trucks, the what, the street is not wide enough for those trucks to come out of where they're gonna come out of. Someone's gonna end up getting hurt. The street is so narrow right here near my house, and as you go down by the water waste treatment plant, it is very narrow there. I try to back out of my driveway, and it's ridiculous, uh, no sooner, I'm almost out of my driveway, and I look both ways very carefully, because I've been here thirty thirty-three years, almost thirty-four years, and someone's right up on me before I can even get out of my driveway. It's terrible. People do not, and you're talking about putting sign, signs up, people don't go by those signs, believe me. They go down this street so fast, it's ridiculous, people rushing to get to work, people rushing to go somewhere, I don't know where they're going, but they're going towards the industrial park, and then they're leaving, coming through from the industrial park, and everybody's in a hurry to go somewhere. I really, I really feel it's very unsafe, it's, if you could come and just stand out here, just stand here at the end of my driveway for a little while, and watch these cars go by, and just imagine a truck coming out, exiting from where this building's gonna be, believe me, there's gonna be a fatal accident there. There will definitely, the what, street is not wide enough for these trucks that they're gonna be bringing in. I think that's all I have to say, I just, please, please come down and stand at the end of my driveway. I've had the police sit in my driveway before, just to try to get people to slow down. You know, because there is a curve there, and people don't realize the curve that's in the road, and how bad it really is. Because when they're coming out, and they're gonna be taking a left, there's no way they can see around that, that little curve. That they're trying to take a left, and there's people coming towards them, there's no way the truck is gonna be able to see it, see the car coming. Unless you cut way back on the other side of where their property's gonna be, you know, cut the curve, uh, cut into the street, make it wider, but cut, cut it back, everything back. Um, that's the only way I could see them doing that, because of that curve, if they could cut that curve out of the road, they'd probably be golden. But with that curve there, I, I really, I really think there's gonna be a fatal accident there. Just putting it out there, I hope everybody takes heed to it, because I can see it happening, I see a lot right here at the end of my driveway every day. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Woods. Chairman?
Yes, I do have a question, I would choose to say, I had understood that driveways were staggered, so there was, like, there wasn't a house driveway directly, so I was gonna say, it was direct.
It's pretty close. Yeah. It is, okay. It's pretty close, I think that's generally, you try to line them up from a traffic design perspective, so that they're not offset enough that they don't interfere with each other, and they see each other straight ahead of each other. Okay. I said each other like four times in a row, but, um, actually, I went through a lot of those discussions, but we're looking at driveways for a couple of farms, um. We started, I would do, uh, just clarify my understanding. Yes. Definitely would. That's, yeah, okay. It's pretty close.
Now, if you look at the map, I looked at the map when we were at that meeting, and believe me, I was concerned and said that the headlights are gonna be coming through my windows in the front for the kids' bedrooms, people exiting, uh, you know, at night or in the morning, five o'clock in the morning's ridiculous, um, with headlights shining in on the house. Um, and that was a big concern, because their driveway is right in, in front of my driveway. If you look at the map, you can see.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. If the truck, keep the traffic lanes on edge, they're pretty busy on the road. Yeah, it's probably not nice to live in a place where we have to have to be with each other to do that, so it's just, that's not, it's a, it's a, it's a. I think that would be a challenge to, uh, enforce from a condition perspective, and a safety perspective. Um, okay. Just a minute. I don't see any additional hands raised in the Zoom meeting, ramble a bit, and see if anybody else in person would like to speak. Um, other than that, I'll ask the applicant, is there anything further we'd like to add, or would we take any other action?
No, I think the only thing we would like to add, however, is you mentioned that as part of the last year, we found out earlier that you don't have a full board. Uh, so we would be looking to continue to the next meeting, and I don't know if Paul knows when the traffic commission meets again, because I don't think it would make sense, unfortunately, to meet before they have a chance to review the plan. So we most likely be looking to continue to the next available meeting after the traffic, so.
The second Wednesday of November. So we'd be looking.
Or let somebody else do that, but.
Well, like. It's on, it's on the, it's on the.
Yeah. I'm thirty, I'm in November.
So our meeting after that would probably be, is the, the nineteenth, the, not the nineteenth of November.
Yeah, so, for this.
Yeah, but could I clarify something on the trucks?
Yeah, I, I, sure.
Alright, please.
I'm John Burke, I'm the owner of Premier Fence. Uh, so, the trucks we use are primarily fence installation trucks, so if you ever had a fence installed, uh, the same trucks we sent down here, where it's all product here, it's not a tractor trailer, it, it, it's an F-six fifty. The advertised truck we run. A third of my employees report to the job sites at seven o'clock direct, they don't come to the shop. We have about fifteen trucks that will leave the shop, installation trucks, and they typically on the job sites by seven. So they've gone well before seven o'clock, when this is ruled us there. We do work many remote areas, rural areas, where we're on sites, and we're turning out into traffic, where there's windy roads, they're in sight in the Berkshires, Upper Worcester County, Paul River area, run into the, all the time. I also wanted to clarify that one of the recommendations we made with the clearing of the vegetation is, is if anyone's gone over the side, Moore Bridge, the Vaughn Bridge, that high curve, the bridge curve, you always have a tendency to go middle of the road. The ends of the pavements here, and you have your vegetation here, that's overgrown, so we recommended that, because subconsciously, someone's gonna be into the center of the road. By getting that cut back, now the driver subconsciously is gonna stay within the marked lane. Also, our office staff and our shop staff, they typically arrive anywhere from seven-thirty to eight-thirty each day. It's not a constant flow of traffic coming in a sec, at a certain time, and like the factory letting out constant flow of traffic coming out at the same time. It's staggered, it's not gonna add much more impact to the road, uh, traffic study confirmed that, the pair reviews, traffic study confirmed that. When they had us go back and analyze it on a higher speed limit, it's not even the town's, town light speed limit that they were asking us to analyze. Um, if the town goes out and does a thirty mile per hour regulatory speed limit, this development should be safe. People are gonna, on a property that's developed, they're gonna come up, they're naturally gonna slow down, because they may be expecting traffic coming out, versus having a wooden block where they're just gonna fly down the road. So, I just want to bring up some of those things. Now, we, we will be good neighbors, we have been good neighbors where we are now. We're looking to relocate, we will be fantastic neighbors to the people on the street and to the town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um. If you'd like to help and speak again.
I just, um, when I saw a fifty-one Hill Street, all I can say is that I only located on one thirty-eight, right? One thirty-eight to Hill Street is a big difference. And I get this little comment about not a heavy stream of traffic, it all goes back to safety, the width of the road, and all that, and I wish you guys could talk to the school, um, transportation, I really would. Christine Hatfield said she was going to reach out to the town manager, I don't know if she did, I haven't been able to get in touch with her this week. Um, it mentioned that the school department's part of this town site visit, Christine was there. Right, and I'm sure she voiced her concerns for what's happening. Okay, because I, I will reach out to her again and again. There's a big difference from being on one forty, one twenty-three, one thirty-eight to Hill Street. Now, I know that's known what it is, but it's still a residential area. And no matter what signage you put up, and even if the speed limit's supposed to be thirty, I go thirty from here, I get somebody on my tail. And I don't think putting speed limit signs or anything else is gonna change, I know a study was done, and they said that it was, people would go forty to forty-three. Well, they shouldn't be, common sense. And then just because there's wood, so there's a building, isn't gonna make a difference, because there's speed law here. With me in college, knowing that there's a pedestrian crosswalk, guy in front of me is doing fifty, why am I doing thirty? So I don't think that's even, that's all.
And, and some of it has been passed on one twenty-three.
I've been passed on Hill Street, okay, I, I backed out of my driveway, and someone has gone by me on Hill Street, by the old dump, through the solar panels, yeah. And almost got a major accident, and I, I'm following the NYPD at, at the time, and they chased the person down. So, that's, I, I would say I tend to take a cynical view of following traffic, which is kind of what we're looking at.
Right.
But maybe that's just me.
Um, I have one question, you said you were asked to do a traffic study at a much higher speed than speed, what was the speed you were asked to do it at? So, from a process setting, we asked them to put down a couple of speed strips, and they monitored speed, and they came back, and they modeled the site distances based on crimping along the eighty-fifth percentile of speed, so the average speed of that eighty-fifth percentile was in the forties, not thirty. So what was the number, that was my question. Oh, I'd have to look at the data.
It was not the forty mile per hour, so that was what we had done.
Forty, no, okay, just do on forty. Fifteen.
Exactly forty-three.
Forty three, that's a very.
Yes, that means fifteen out of a hundred cars are going above that. On an average basis. So.
No, we're gonna be all those.
Yeah. Um, so the applicant has asked for a continuance and the date that we ended up with is November the nineteenth, after the traffic safety committee. Given that one of our members also serves in that committee, I think we can make sure that we make it on our agenda. Uh. Any additional questions or comments at this time?
There are, there are, Jamie, let's move.
Okay.
If they're trusting traffic, so I'm gonna need to go take up the rest.
Any questions or comments, or do we have a motion?
A motion to continue to, what did you say the date was?
November the nineteenth.
November the nineteenth.
Second.
We have a motion from Jim and a second from Rob, is any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, extensions. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay.
They're actually ready, ready?
No, it isn't. Uh, but finally, I'm on our agenda, it's seventy nine West Main Street. Uh, the applicant for this project is proposing to convert a single family house to a duplex. And, um, they're gonna be at the ZBA tomorrow night, the, okay? Um, so Paul, you're calling up the, calling here, perfect, so I don't have to say anything other than ramble. Uh, if you'd like to just give a quick introduction of yourselves, sir?
Sure. All right, to give you your time, board members. Uh, my name's Marcus Purdy, I own seventy nine West Main Street, that is a sprawling single family house. This main street, I'm seeking a permit to convert that from a single family to a duplex. Uh, there's not a lot of changes proposed to the actual site or to the structure itself at all. Um, just a, some increased parking area, but it's, uh, it's on a curvy surface that we're at. And, uh, just to accommodate six cars that we need. And the actual dimensions of the house and the footprint of the house and the kind of that changes, we're just gonna be basically repurposing. The large two thousand square foot structure in the back, that, um, wasn't a full house, so converting that into a livable dwelling. That's the second half of the duplex. Um, any questions they can answer?
And I know Paul has the, the plan up there on the screen, but, uh, you know, the monitors that we have available here are a little bit. Is this the house that was just the other one, the Halloween decoration?
I remember, I remember.
Go back, sir, is that, if I remember it right.
Yes, I remember that one, and it, the house was owned by Butch Rich Junior a long time, and. I remember him having Halloween decorations there. But I have the way to grab for you that.
So, uh, again, the, the application is requesting to convert the single family to a duplex. Um. And giving forward ZBA tomorrow with the variance, is there any, you mentioned now a whole lot of changes, is there gonna be like. Added walls and electrical and all utilities can be split, or?
Yeah, in terms of inside the structure, there's gonna be, um, a fit up, and I'm, I'm in conversation with the building department about how to permit that. There's a, um, bit of a hard order for the feeding stretch build for the area that's been converted, so. Still working for the guns and bolts on what that will be like, but the main, the main part of the house, the, the one we see through the street. That remains pretty much as is, it's already a perfect full round that for, uh. Uh, kind of the light remodel, there are no actual structural changes or footpathing changes. And there's, in that packet that you got, there was, um, existing floor plans, we will see. As well as a proposed floor plan, you can see, that's for the apartment, it includes the most working, that'll be a separate dwelling. There's not much that's gonna change back, there are a lot of it's already existing. And nothing changes in terms of the actual building footprint. So, um, just they will be a fit up, but that's focused to be determined.
Yeah, I know it's not usually what we looked at, in terms of just process and all of that stuff.
Yep.
So you're not gonna go through the process and go, oh, I need to make another change, come back? Uh, yeah.
Yeah, just the old curve balls and stretch code and figuring out how to take what's the area, maybe work best. Then a little bit of, you know, the added property, uh, of the activity, it's the same, we have the right into mark for not in conservation jurisdiction in terms of exterior improvements, so.
It's a parking, um, fun, maybe the parking will be out back, just up here.
Um, no, that's a, that's a, particles sold out separately, so that we don't have, we don't need any access to that.
Oh, so you don't have any of this over here?
Correct.
Just the house right here?
Yep.
It is on building commercial, the JESS proposed in the form.
Yeah, that's right there. Here.
Yes, I remember, it's, yeah, it's still, it's not as, yeah, not very much.
Yeah.
And Paul, in terms of specific relief from a procedural standpoint for the board. Um. This is a special matter, that?
Right, and it's just for the fact that it's a duplex in, in Village Commercial.
I don't know, and there's no other relief in terms of other waivers or anything else?
Not needed here, other than we would, if you were to vote tonight, we can add a condition to say it's contingent on approval by the ZBA. What is the property size? I'm sorry, the property size, uh, uh, fourteen thousand, is it? Uh, fourteen thousand four hundred eighty two.
So it's an under seven one. Village Commercial comes for eighteen.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, I mean, that's a, it exists already.
It is, okay, okay. Just curious, are you, is it located in the house and we still speculate that, it looks almost like this is two houses, the ones connected? And, and is that your, they're gonna kind of try to mention two sets of floors again?
Um, so that's actually a, a very large indoor pool.
Oh.
Yep, that, so it was, it was an outdoor pool, then you get an indoor pool, and then the previous owner had, uh, partially. Finished the space without permits and things, and then, um, so we're trying to do the, uh, the right right here.
So is this house here, you're just this little house right here that you compared to the duplex?
Yeah, so it's, it's a big house, but that's all one, that's all one basic of the house right now.
Yeah.
So that big structure up the back of the small garage you see, that will be a, a four meter to that.
Oh, so the pool's going right?
What's that?
The pool's going right?
It's already covered, it has a, has a whole floor. The whole frame, floors, and plings, and walls.
So you don't have any gap for it?
No, no.
Okay, so that open access.
Okay. So additional questions for the applicant at this time? I'll turn around and make sure there's any public comment from anybody on Zoom who would like to speak. Absent that, I'm just gonna ramble for ten seconds in case anyone needs to find mute button. As is my habit and why I can do it in the rest of my life, but that's up to that. Uh, with that out of the way, any further questions from the board or any motions?
Motion to approve.
Uh, we should have a, sorry, we should have a motion to post a public hearing first.
Motion to post a public hearing, yes. Set up in the.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to oppose the public hearing. And to the earlier points of the post public hearing, we stopped listening to the applicant. Uh.
You rejected the nine one one, too?
I did, I rambled and nobody spoke up. Um, so the motion is second to oppose the public hearing. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please respond by saying aye. Uh, uh, all opposed, extensions. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Steve, did you want to take another reaction?
Sure.
Motion to approve the, the, second. Motion and a second, Steve and Rob to approve the special permit for a duplex in Village Commercial. Any further discussion?
Would we make a contingent on ZBA? Yes.
Okay, contingent on ZBA, is that under motion?
Yes. Yes, we should have approved it there.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay. Uh, so the decision, I'll go through the role here. Steve?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is approved and. That's that work I'm saving for you, uh, and good luck at ZBA tomorrow.
Thank you. Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
It looks good, say yes to something, it's wrong. It always does. Um, so I will read, that is the end of the items that we have listed on our posted agenda. Paul, is that, uh, missing anything for that?
Correct.
Um. Before I accept a motion to adjourn, just wanted to note that, uh, Paul sent down a couple of documents, AP law about social media. And town boards, not necessarily directed at work, but, um, our. Town council has issued them previously for other things, so please give them a read. Uh, my position always being, I don't grow a person on social media, and that's it, so. Any questions, comments, anything else?
No. We're adjourned, we're going, right?
We are, yeah, yeah, just. Yeah. Uh, it's, it's just, I'm being.
I should have made a jump, but they lost, he had a motion to adjourn.
Motion, that's, Eric? Eric, who's your motion?
Sure, yeah, I thought you did.
All right, just making sure for the minutes, that's all. The motion in the second from Eric and Rob respectively, any further discussion on a motion to adjourn? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. We are adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.